...applause... ...of the United States Attorney General. And due to your privilege, for which it stands, I would like to honor your daughter and her physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call. Alvin Ron Garnett. Eric. Alvin Karl Schultz. Here. Alvin Nethager. Here. Per the way of the agenda.
Mr. Allison, do you have a per on the agenda?
This way. Motion to make a favor on the favor.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Consent agenda.
I make a motion, do you uh, approve that consent agenda?
Second. Motion to make a favor on the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, but, don't you go on, that's a tough deal up. I'm being business, to you all. We ain't really done no work on that, but I think most of it is in consensus, if they're involved, don't like it. But we gotta get the data for that. But until we get that done, then we'll be closed on Monday. See, they all be open. And the odds will be voted for, for, and collected. Here, leave, last, this state, I don't know, who, I mean, we can vote if I'm here on two or whatever it does. But the odds, if he, when somebody come in, he takes care of business, we, we, well, that's up to him, how he's gonna vote his lunch beer. But then anytime, the odds are supposed to be here, it's gotta be open, you know? When people know, won't come up in lunch beers or today. So there will be a big time, a painted time, and it'll be voted, who get it made up, and everybody know what's on. Okay? I guess the ordinance, the court of which? You might got any questions? Who read?
Where that's October 1st, so.
It don't have to be passed today, if anybody wants time, but it's gotta be done by the end. What, yeah, what now it starts October 3rd?
Yeah. It's gonna be done this month.
Yeah, it's that thing, I think the week that's that thing. My wife's wife is, her birthday is gonna be over, but it's not new yet. Oh, Charlie waiting, not gonna be here, yeah, but uh, but the, all the...
Tower of Manhattan.
Next time we hit a regular, we can, if you need to talk about, then I'll go ahead and talk to you. I'll come down there through in a couple days. Didn't even, you don't pass it? I mean, that's a good, you can make modified, or you can bend it a little more. So we sure spent more time on it than we did. You think that could be, I don't think, yeah, no, not at all. Make a motion.
Make a motion, pass those, or, or first reading, okay? Kenny.
Motion to make a favor on the vote on, vote on vote for the first reading by Kenny only of Bill 983. Alvin Ron Garnett. Yep. Alvin Karl Schultz. Aye. Alvin Nethager.
Yes.
First reading of Bill 983, and ordinance adopting annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2021, and appropriating funds pursuant thereto. Motion for a second reading.
I make a motion for second reading of Bill number 983, Daniel.
Second.
To make a favor on, vote on vote for the second reading by Kenny only of Bill 983. Alvin Ron Garnett. Yep. Alvin Karl Schultz. Aye. Alvin Nethager.
Yes.
Second reading of Bill 983, and ordinance adopting annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2021, and appropriating funds pursuant thereto. Motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt Bill number 983.
Second.
Vote on vote for adoption of Bill 983. Alvin Ron Garnett. Aye. Alvin Karl Schultz. Yes. Alvin Nethager.
Yes.
Motion passed, bill adopted.
Okay. Talked about this in the part, you didn't report, or what do you need to do about this? Oh, I see. That damn bitch. They gotta be took care of, gotta make up a mind, what we gonna do? Now I guess we doing, we started talking about feed last week, and we trying to do that, I don't understand.
I'm just feeding my sewer.
Huh?
My sewer part.
We do, and when we get to that, we'll be okay then. All right. Okay, and you been, your partner number four.
Um, we received our funds from American Rescue, and um, we actually got our fund on the second day that they released funds. We had all our stuff in, bro, so we're good there, and that's on.
Did we get it all, or did we get half, like I said?
Everybody got half.
We expect it to happen, you say?
Next year.
August of next year.
Yeah.
Do you hear better?
I wish we had the common, the BP, they can't figure out how to divide it, we got the...
That's one of them tough ones.
Please, what?
I had 30 calls for services, two medical, one motor vehicle, and three disturbances, two gymnastics. So problems with the east side of the street from the finance center. Plenty of new signs down there, so no parking on that street for that ordinance that was adopted. So to ask if maybe that can be put up. Because we got one down here, and I measured it off, and it take foot from the stop sign. It says, no parking this side today.
What?
Between this business commercial block. That was put in plenty of time, ordinance.
I mean, what, what do you, more than a fourth of town?
Yeah, we got part, no parking sign, this side of the street, the fire hazard, in case they need to get their medical or anything else. From this...
What are you asking for?
This street from this...
I know what you talking about, but you want to go between buying and...
Yeah.
...through you?
That way it's close, then I don't have...
How many more signs more, you got them up there?
This too, we only need two.
There ain't no two sides on that street?
No. It needs to be close within, there's no signs between Vators and this commercial square, this, consider it commercial business.
You made time for the book? Yeah, we just have to look, yeah.
Because we had a little issue last time there with parking...
Well, we got to park, we have a hundred or two signs that say, no parking this side of the street.
Yeah, sometimes we go off that ditch, and...
Well, that's true, baby, if the driver in the ditch, the sign won't keep him driving in the ditch, it's gonna...
No, but they get in a little more in this case.
He can't give you a good ticket, get right in the ditch, here's the roof, coming right up, right under your head, leave the ball everywhere up.
Yeah.
That ain't my problem, parking it, I mean, you can't hardly give a ticket if ain't enough pop to sign it, but somebody parked it, and run that ditch, that's their fault.
Other than that, that's all I have, other stuff, just, it's going forward, should be finishing up, hopefully for this time. Let's do a jury trial.
You got to do it till I come down?
I got three, if they out or jury trial settings next week, so we'll see then, how that works out.
Mark, plug.
Uh, one minute call, a few hard law calls, uh, and then we had numerous sign of road hazard calls, uh, for where that, where that storm came through, uh, we could go over here later, so. A new truck, got it outside, it's up and rolling, and it's actually in service right now, uh, gotta do a little few modifications to it, uh, gotta buy a couple more pieces of equipment, turn around, that way we have one of that truck, if we don't, we don't have a full crew, just take eighty-one with us, so, nothing major, we're private wise, uh, so.
Between, uh, between the river fed and cloation, now we got a few men, a gentleman that we talked, for letting go out there, and, and done.
So, the truck's all leathered and everything, or, we took that upon us, helped to get leathered, we did all that, we can't work on it, uh, we tested the pump, made sure that every valve stuff worked in it before we did everything. Uh, the truck would have been in service probably a month ago or so, but we had some issue with forty-two, and we had to swap everything back to our original forty-one for the time being, and we had half and half on each truck, and we just put it back because we didn't know how long forty-two was going to be now. Um, turn around, uh, see, uh, forty-two, uh, is, uh, we got the dryer in, we got the, refrigerant on in, uh, we got the basic pressure arm on it for it to run and everything, um, I do have a guy coming down, he's gonna, uh, back it down, and everything, and then he's gonna recharge the water, I mean, I don't know, and a charge on that, or...
I got all the equipment to do that.
Oh, well, I mean, they don't matter, you don't...
More than that, I mean, but I got the equipment, I got the pump and everything, I don't want to...
I, I didn't know that you had all, everything, that all you did.
I got everything, I...
So, we still gotta put the trigger valve on it in, we got the dryer, uh, in, which is kind of headache, because it's a real tight spot, so, uh, it's been, last weekend we were gonna do it, and it was raining, so we had, we had to do it. Um, conservation grants in, uh, paint on equipment in, for the conservation grant for a few items that we need for the pumpers to actually intervene with mutual aid departments. It's probably gonna be a hydrant valve, uh, probably gonna be a manifold, stuff like that for LTHOs, we'll see what you get on the, uh, price line on everything, uh, which is a fifty-fifty, uh, uh, grant, so, they pay fifty percent, we pay fifty percent. Um, I know we gotta spend, I think it's over five hundred, we have to spend to be able to accept, then accept a grant. Uh, the other thing is, the road grant, uh, looking into trying to get a price figured up on what we get, on, you know, if the constitution grant don't go through, is the road grant going through, I mean, I don't wanna put material down for both grants for the same thing, so, anyway, I'm working on that, or down, MFA grants out too, right now, uh, they're fifty-fifty, deal two, uh, I know they come out with a lot of local fire departments and stuff around here, so. Um, the gun rappel, uh, we got all the gun rappel back in and everything, uh, we did the drawing last Monday, but anyways, I'm, uh, so Travis Grout of Jackson, Missouri, one to nine to Smith and West Monroe Mill, and Susan Alton from Second Gen, one to Henry from here, forty-two, I think. So I did appreciate everybody that contributed to that, I know a lot, and asking us already if we're gonna do another one, and have it be arrived, so I'm trying to work that out, our gun supplier, and see if he's gonna be able to do it, you know, and stuff, so. Um, I did talk about building barbecue, I'm trying to get things lined up, if we can do it, um, I know I did talk to Ronnie, over here at Vators, uh, because we talked before about doing the barbecue, and everything, have a band, and we take, you know, we'll get all the proceeds from our barbecue, uh, I know there's a little confrontation there on who's gonna be there, who's not, uh, basically, I know, you know, the, how should I say it, the senior citizens bunch, that represents us, you know, for us being a fire department and stuff, I know they contribute to barbecue and stuff, um, I don't know if they would actually stop the audio thing, because I don't have to work, and you know, we normally have it parked out, so I've been trying to look at how we're gonna do that, so, uh, we're still looking to hopefully have it, but it's just getting manpower to be there on Saturday, and, so, let's get them up, yeah. The other thing is, is, uh, uh, we're gonna be doing some service work on the trucks, we're gonna be getting some oil and stuff, we're gonna have to do some maintenance, changing uh, oil in the woods. Forty-one, the old forty-one, we got it parked in bay, uh, my reference to it is, uh, and from the other firemen too, we kind of don't wanna push the issue of getting rid of it, like right from the get-go, we wanna see what the new forty-one's gonna act like, what's gonna do, because, I mean, we'll still probably run that truck, just to keep it up and going, but after we feel comfortable with it, make sure we can blow a seal or something, you know, fight the fire, turn around, then we'll, all about getting rid of it, and how we willing, how we willing to get rid of it, so.
Danny said he wouldn't interrupt that.
He got a microphone?
He got the hell of a mic.
Yeah, he got room up there for...
I got room right now, turn around, I'm, uh, I mean, we got it parked in a bay, that we did tear the meeting room a lot, and we thought everything was gonna fall in place to get the new add-on on, but not the wood, hopefully that happens within next year or so. Uh, but, um, other than that, I mean, I got nothing else further to report, uh, the only other issue I had, and I'm gonna pass on that, um, I didn't see it personally myself, oh, I seen the traps, uh, we got some APDs just right in the hillside up there, between the firehouse and Chamberlain. I turned around, uh, I talked to the car, I turned around on the issue, um, I don't know, to keep our bus safe, I don't know if we need to put trespassing's corner bill up, you know, at the firehouse, if it did have a wreck, if it's gonna, like, I don't know how insurance and stuff goes, you know, I don't wanna...
You can't have a trespassing sign over every foot across the city owned, I mean, and then you probably cross the field, you're trespassing, and that's obvious, I mean, you might put something there, right before they check that, and maybe let, just hint and know that we see this, a camera set up, the best thing, we're all, coachers got picture of him, he won't do it again, I didn't think.
You know, I mean, it's just...
And we're getting some cameras.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a, you know, you know, it's...
It should be closing country apart, or we get this...
Well, it's possible, though.
Big two problems, Dave and Charlie.
I mean...
You're male, can't remember.
I mean, especially in the grass, but, you know, like, it was right after a rain, I mean, it didn't throw no wood or anything, it's just, you see the tractor, you know, in the grass, so...
But they legal any, uh, they get there, we're legal, it was a quarter, quarter, not a thousand, right?
And the other thing is too, is I'm gonna be sending some letters out, uh, to certain residents of the town, uh, you guys don't have a problem with it, uh, maintaining their driveway, uh, turn around, I mean, trying to get fire truck up a few of the driveways in town, I mean, not in rural, I understand, you know, you're paying fire tag, and you're gonna be charged, you know, uh, for kind of being there, you know, so. My issue with it is, some of them in town, uh, rip lights off or something, I mean, they're gonna be charged for, 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 you know, for damages.
Talking about the driveway, you're talking about driveways to their house, homes to their house, trees?
Yeah, I mean, uh, forty-two, forty-two wouldn't make it up, some of these driveways would overcurb.
You know, what I mean, because my respect is being sold.
Yeah.
That being new owners, right, in their future, I ain't been on real things, I know it for sale.
Yeah.
Who? Doc, Doc? No.
Yeah, Doc, though.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Anyways, I mean, it's just a, issue is, because, I mean, uh, I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see it's terror, I mean, we're trying to get up our driveway either, you know, uh, and I mean, it's a windland situation, I mean, we're going to the call, we're going to fight fires, we can't make it up the driveway, we don't wanna hear the grief, what are you getting with fire, I'm, I'm tired of your driveway, so, that's just the way I look at folks like this, you know, this type of...
How, how, what, what do they wanna do, same way they wanna do this?
Well, we want to do this, so, how about...
I know, in particular, uh, Doc, in that driveway, I'm working on that property, because they've, um, got...
Yeah, and I mean, and it's no big deal, I mean, it's, you know, whoever does the job, I don't really want to bother me, I mean, you know...
But there's no way he could get up there, it was gonna be quite tough, man.
The only truck I'm gonna be able to get up there with is brush truck and probably eighty-one, that's one of the trucks I'm gonna be able to, probably get that truck. Same goes for, uh, White Cliff Manor, I mean, it's gonna be a headache getting up it.
But he was told, a long time ago, by lack to come in, uh, that, you know, lack to come in, that, if them waters gets tore up back there, we just pay them, because them won't let them cut down the trees, or we might, you know, he didn't even cut the trees. We done did raw, work on the road, but we never did even that.
And the other thing is to do is, we're gonna, a few of us firemen, they're probably gonna get together, we're gonna get some paint, uh, some red fire and paint, we're gonna paint some of these hydrants, pretty dull looking, uh, turn around, I mean, there's some of them, you don't think, there's a hydrogen air, etc., so, uh, I know we can't afford to drop new hydrogen, and every year, and it's, it makes the paint coated, and stuff, so, you know, that's the only thing, we're gonna be, hopefully, in years, it'll start cooling down a little bit for us, so.
It? I stand up a guy agreement from a couple of families that take care of the bill on the truck. I thought we'd get somewhere, the name was fourteen hundred dollars, so, I ain't tied to pennies yet, but I gotta do, I got agreement, uh, ten agreement on buying the meters, housing, and everything, for the top, and I talked to a couple of chamber people, and I, they never told me, no, I mean, man, they, they said that's what it's there for, I mean, yeah, I give you a call, and that's what we like to take care of, we think, we're just big budget, but if something comes up, I need you to call, we like to, to figure it out. So I got agreement on them too, then, and something else, something, I can't, I can't put my finger off this one, I talked to a couple of chamber members, but, hey, something else we're gonna do, I don't know what that is, oh, we got, we still need to get that, we gotta get some like armor set up, the dumpster, and get rid of them and stuff, before it gets too late, too cold, but, the, we, we, the, the chamber agreed for the dumpster and everything, David made some inquiries, calling it up.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But, but we just try to get a group together, or something set it up and figure it out, and so, some of us are trying to have to be down there, some of the weekend, it'll get done, but it's gonna be inside the fence down there, for a few, can't just get rid of all the old tires and things, and there'd be somebody there to supervise it, if it come up with metal and things, it was just throw it off to the side, and instead of just haul it off the ground, or that.
You're making a list, for the...
I don't know, uh, I mean, you can't say no, uh, wood, or sometimes it'd be no ladder with wood and a thing, and some, but you really ain't supposed to burn, uh, I mean, a lot of treated wood or something like that, we throw it out, out, and everything, like, if you got a little bit of scrap there and there or something, but for burnt oak furniture and...
And, like, a ladder, and stuff like that.
Yeah, if it was in the, in the bed, they had, like, a list, like, two...
And then you can put out like the ladder, whatever.
But I'd like to get that done, for the other complaint, and I still like to do it sometime through the week, on a certain day, if that's put it out, it's been blowed, with the job trucks, people that can't take it up or stuff, we go pick it up, and, I don't know, we'll get one night straight or something, and we get, we pick it up for them, but we need to get this out, get it set up, and get the information out.
That'll help bring up the town quite good, to do that.
Well, a lot of people get rid of stuff that has a place to take, yeah, but, I mean, some of them know everywhere, so, but I'm not going, it's not sin to somebody to demolition a house or something, because that's, that's kinda what it's intended for, it's intended for somebody living there, and the stuff that accumulated, I don't ever take a washer or a diaper, so, we just set aside the trash, if, if we don't wanna take it, and enough, David, he's always had to drive, he'll take them up, take them home, ain't much money in it, but he'd get rid of them, but they be able to get rid of the old washers, you know, a lot of places don't take them. So, that's what we need to get, we need to get to work on that and get it set up, okay? And I, you saying, what the, you got something going on, Bart, so I'll let you know a couple things you gotta get?
Yeah, I agree, you saying, very...
Yeah, wait a minute, let me know what to do.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah, um, one, uh, water meter that you was talking about too, how we set up, how do you want to build that up, and you want to build that to...
I guess you have to build it thickly, and, uh, thickly, and we'll pay that.
Then I'll have it delivered here.
And then just build it up, build it to the city, uh, water department, and, uh, we'll run through the city for the expenses to go. But I still gotta add in there, for, we're gonna have to rent a track hole or something, so I have to add something to it, we'll take care of it. All right, okay?
Three? All right, we had to buy two new cars for the dump truck, to get everybody got that taken care of and put on, now we need to go get the coal patch and do some patching on some of the streets here, that's definitely need to be done before winter. Come on, it's cold season, we're gonna finish a lot of, quite a bit of tree trimming, especially over by the bridges, by the highway.
They did a lot in that bridge.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna knock down a bigger tree and get all that cleaned up there, or gotta start over again before it starts growing, because it's affecting huge to the highway, so I'm gonna get that, a lot of that personal work I'm doing, I'm gonna do that myself, me and a couple buddies, and we're gonna come in and knock it out, so. Let's see, other, coal pads, get the streets done, that's all I've got.
Yeah, coal, they, sometimes they shut down our roof, and they, they hold for a long time.
Well, that's something we can find out, we're buddies with me.
That's how you make.
Except for the steering on the truck, and we gotta get fixed sooner or later, but...
Oh, we talking about the other dump?
Oh, no, 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 they don't take that anyhow, that's right, that's the other dump truck that we put apart.
We'll have to get that ready before winter.
Yeah, we gotta get, uh, play a piece of snowplow, that I could do. And we got all the two signs and snowplows.
Okay.
Right, we got them already.
Oh, you got them, yeah, I thought we got them.
Yeah, they're new, they're hanging there.
Yeah, oh, okay, I thought it was so bad.
Yeah, they just got a cold.
You got cold, nothing?
Yeah, they're a bit cold now, they got a whole box of sun.
Let's take care of it.
We pretty much have the streets on, where the whole block, they're providing all that, that rest of the.
Dave? That's it, that's all I've got. Warren, what you got?
Uh, big news is that the tower over top on Saturday and Sunday malfunctioned the equipment, and it kept calling for water, and over top the tank, up on top of the. Lost fighting water there.
Yeah, it's one thing, but, and a lot of things went wrong, it's showing them that don't know whose blame. A lot of people thought on that, but whenever you got phone numbers in there, that, and three mayors hint then, and. And one of the city workers, they don't have that phone no more, it was a hot phone, but it was never communicated, or. I don't know who the other number was, there's another number in there, but if they told me, I don't remember. But them two, there's no way, so I, we don't know if it tried to call or not, because it's supposed to, but we do know when it went over. It had the time when it went over, so I assume that if that was right, it probably had tried to call these numbers, but I don't think we had a good number in there.
Plus, the other thing is, just so you remember, you don't have to go to that tower, because you can run it over. The one at the bottom, they had said you gotta run over a million feet before that tower, and it was a different level of, uh, for that, topped over at seven foot.
That means that one's had to run over too, I think.
So, okay, that's all, that's true.
So, that, that one's running over way before this one's running over, so you probably lost, you know, you said, an estimate, or you better double that estimate.
But I thought that one checked down a little water leak door?
No, we kept that one on due to fire protection, because we don't have no booster pumps to keep pressure regulated in the system, which, that's what we had up there on the street.
But that one won't run over at a hundred and five, if this is a hundred and five, that one won't.
This one over, if this, this one starts, I think it's one oh six, one oh six, I think it's one oh six or one oh six five.
It runs over, but it kicked off at one oh five.
Yeah, it kicks off.
And then that one won't run over at one oh five, I think.
That one will run over before that one starts running.
But, what I'm saying, we kick off at one oh five, that's top.
Yeah, that sixty-five foot, or sixty-seven.
Probably will hit a few feet over, a few inches over, it's not gonna run over out here.
Yeah. Does that one set for sixty-seven feet, and that one's set for one oh five, thanks to the high one, so.
What should be in, or there's phone numbers we need to get to call somebody?
We got, it's got four numbers, then it's got, my first, Cody second, Mike the third, and then Clark, they had me, but they had the Clark.
So, that's taken care of, and the numbers is all.
That's all taken care of.
Okay. It did ring four numbers, and if it rang the first number, even, they got an answering machine or a cell phone that answers. And then if you don't punch the code in, when it calls you, to show you received it, it goes to the next number. And everybody who's got a phone number will have it, of course. It's all the same, but I mean, you have to punch it in. And I know that we're getting that meter put in, when they can get together and do it, and then get the equipment in the park. Like I say, you can go down to the city, the Chamber of Steam, or whatever. I got the bill for the Edson on the park, but we may have to get something else or more, but.
But the thing about it this year, and I mean, I'd like to try to see if we can get knocked out before it gets cold.
That wasn't preventing what happened this time, but it'd help us know that if we develop a couple of leaks, right? We gotta know by reading it every day that we're going way over, maybe a couple, two, three thousand over, we know, and wanted, go forever without that knowing. Oh, yeah, the, I mean, the wastewater, we sent the blower motor off, you'll be aware of that. So, are you, have you seen the? Well, they, they called us, they, that one, they charged two hundred and fifty-five dollars, look at that, that's gotta be rebuilt. They want two thousand dollars to rebuild, or they want twenty-six hundred dollars for a new one. So, we got a bit from, use a little blue book. They sell us a new one for twenty-two thirty-seven.
What, what's the brand difference?
I don't know, it's, I don't judge much of you, you had a blue book.
Well, that's, that's a, that's the universal, yeah, that's the universal root, in blue book, I don't know what pump shop's got.
But I don't know, but we didn't find that out.
Did they, did they have any kind of warranty on it, like, blue, uh, blue books got a warranty, but then.
They got air on that one, they're gonna rebuild, I did that talk to Mike on. Mike called me days at school, and told me a little bit about it, but I don't have all the information I would need. But, I think you're up to date on all this stuff, or you are, or hoping to get with somebody and find out, and, because, on paper, this is the best deal, but it ain't obvious. But they wanted within a six hundred dollars of rebuilding one to buy a new one, that's too close.
I would, I wouldn't rebuild the pump, because the thing that is, you don't know exactly what's going on with that.
I wish they would send it back to us, where we could do a little experiment with it, and see what makes a tick, and see if we can in-house order kits and.
Well, you can in-house order kits, it's just the point, you gotta have the timing of the gearing, where's your going, right, from when it's done, the exhaust, you know, the sucking in, and going out, and around, it's gotta be, I mean, it's gear here, so.
But it would be, that's, that's still fit back to us, probably be a fee. But it would be something to look at, and see what makes a tick and everything.
Well, my thing is, why don't we just buy a new one, put it in there?
Well, look by a new one, yeah, I just wanna look at the old one.
Well, yeah, I'd say, maybe, maybe we can put it back together, you know, and have a spare one ready to go.
But they, they make a kit, that's what I'm telling them.
Yeah, they make, they make.
Maybe we can put, then they work, if they worked on for backup, then we'd, you know.
I'm sure it's all gear driven, isn't it? That's all gear driven?
I don't know why, I, I, well, yeah, it's check driven, yeah.
It turned around, I mean, it's.
It's got baffles or something.
It's gotta do, you know, your two horse motor, whatever, dude, it's running it, and then it's melted, you know, melted, but it's got your veins, turn around that, makes the air push it. And you got, you got your intake pulls down out of your normal fun air, and it pulls it in and pushes through, and sends it to the blower to do the setting, but the air is in that, it's like this.
I think it kinda, I paid the, the, I found on the old honey wagon, when they got fiber drops down there on them, they start and blow, and just took, but the, nothing ever gets to it, but that. We're seeing, got sent it back, but we're gonna find out within the next few days, week one, the best, if it's twenty-six hundred, the, the best dealer, or thirty, twenty-two hundred.
Well, I mean, it's anybody's, I walked along thirty-four year ago, I don't remember how long ago it was, or I got that one, uh, to be replaced and everything. Anyways, that one came from Blue Book, and I don't remember what warranty was on it, and I know Blue Book always change their prices, you know, every year, on things, but. I mean, the pump shop, they, you know, if it's a different name brand, a better name brand, I mean, I probably don't.
Pump shop on the warranty too.
Yeah, on the warranty.
What do you, what do you want, that you recommend, Tony, you two, your old department, and he, he really old department too, for knowing the best stuff to get, so. You two get together and come up with something in order.
And, uh, the other thing we have to do is, on that old one, we're gonna get it back, I like to turn the hand around, because if it's like our, you know, our system, so, I mean, I like to look at it.
It's that thing, huh, twenty-four hour fix, come this week, they don't know each other. But they two of them, we're switching over here.
Well, no, I mean, you only.
And we gotta get another one in there, we maybe need another one for long, we don't get some of it. I wish it was like the old grinders down there, that used to be in them too, they kick, all of them ain't kicking on, you know, one day, next day. But it lasts for a long time, I, the only thing to do with that. I think, I'll help you, I told you to do it, so I'll help you out. Anything else on water weight?
Yes, sir.
Park down there, ain't none of here, but we had a tour, needed some animal control last night, from about two thirty daylight, dog and bark everywhere in my neighborhood. You had it down there? I think it was, I don't think it was my neighbor, I think it was the other one. I ain't called nobody three or five over a parking dollar. It was a big dog, a big boy, it's any now. Now, okay, that, there ain't nobody else want to, anything, they on the park or the temperature or anything, we had a long war problem today. It took care of it with minimum expense.
So, my girlfriend?
The dealer turned and hit a foul with the tire, sheared the bone off, and that got bumped that holds the blade, holds the blade. Oh, and sure, dog, he know we gonna have to weld it on, and did it, they're acting, brought down the house, and they took a little punch, and he backed out. So, we had to, he said we need new blades anyhow, and we had to put three new blades on, and fire both, where there's even been no shafts and that and that, so. I don't know if it was something new, or why he hit it, or if he don't use anymore, I don't know, there's certain dangers at all, but I said, no, Cody was out, and he hit it, he said, uh, shut off the house, with a, that cat's tire, I turned, my big tire. I guess, he said it's a water tire, it's thick of here, weren't it? I didn't have, don't make much difference what happened, I mean, he get teared within the inside of the fence with water tire. Good man, I don't, I don't know anymore about it, but, okay, I assume you're here about your water, yeah?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I, anybody, any citizens down in, this is a citizen's participation, am I got anything? Motion to adjourn, being.
Make a motion in there, maybe.
I'm making a statement, I'm there. So, now, I think we're gonna take about five minutes to go out and look at the fire truck. This is something you need?
Nope, that's the bill for the eighteen.
Oh, that one?
Yep.